Well, thank you, Mr. Skorman. I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. It seems like it's been a while since I've joined you all today. But as you all know, there's a lot that has been happening. And I work very closely with Mayor Suthers and Brett Waters is who is public health liaison also to you all. And I also stay connected with many council members throughout the pandemic. To say that this has been, or still is, a marathon, I think is an understatement. But I'm here today to present some good news and steady progress on the vaccine distribution and rollout. So I'm not sure how much you are aware as it relates to all of the planning that has went into the vaccine distribution and the rollout. And there's been numerous challenges as it relates to vaccine supplies, which makes it hard to plan and prepare when there's unpredictability. But we have been doing the best that we can do with planning assumptions. We have been planning since last August, points of dispensing, to have the vaccine and to make sure that we meet the goals of providing quickly, vaccinating people safely and efficiently. And so I want to talk a little bit about a triple action plan that we have with El Paso County and Colorado Springs that you are all involved in. And Councilwoman Yolanda Avila is on our Vaccine Consortium, as well as Mayor Suthers and many members of your team. But our triple action plan involves, first, working with existing infrastructure. And the existing infrastructure that we're working with, there's over 20 areas throughout El Paso County and Colorado Springs with 98 different locations. Now, we have been ramping up since August in preparation for the vaccine supplies, which our first vaccine supplies were available to El Paso County mid-December. And let me give you a little bit of good news related to steady progress. And I do believe that we are going to continue making steady progress as vaccine supplies do increase. We have had some weather challenges. The week of the 15th, February 15th, we didn't receive our Mordana vaccine. And that was not in our control and throughout Colorado and other areas. So we didn't receive supplies there. And then also, last week, there were some weather storms as well, the week of March 8th. So that's going to affect our supply. But I do want to say that from March through where we are now, we've given out 78,000 doses of vaccine. That's something that I think is to be celebrated, especially by all of the Vaccine Consortium partners, not only the leadership of the existing infrastructure, the hospitals, the hospital leadership, the healthcare, all of the volunteers that it takes, the pharmacies, Peak Vista, Matthews Vu. It's very vast throughout El Paso County. And so to give some perspective to that, from mid-December through February, we gave out 14,000 doses. So we've seen from 14,000 doses in those about a month and a half to jumping up all the way to 78,000 doses. So I think that you can see that there's momentum there. And we have a wonderful community with so many different experts. And I can't emphasize enough the incredible work that is going on. There's no way that we can thank everyone that is involved. But I can tell you that people are working seven days a week tirelessly in the public health system, first responders, the fire department. We were recognized last week just on a statewide call as being a model practice for our homebound partnership with the fire department to go into people's homes if they can't have the access to the vaccine. And that's part three of our triple action plan, is that increasing equitable access to vaccine and reducing barriers. And so there's a lot of great things going on. So let me go back to that triple action plan, using existing infrastructure, which is really where we're at now. Now, we have the second part of that triple action plan is ramping up through drive-throughs or parking lots. And I think you all heard about the World Arena Mass Vaccination Site. It's a FEMA framework where they will start out at 2,000 vaccinations, six days per week, and they will be able to ramp up all the way to 6,000 vaccinations per day, six days a week. So that's part two of our triple action plan, using existing infrastructure, parking lots, increasing the mass vaccination. And then the third part of that is increasing equitable access and reducing barriers. So that's really the framework that we have been working in with the public health system and with numerous different partners that has gotten us to where we are currently. We've also seen daily increases in the average doses administered per day, nearly 3,400 per day. But keep in mind that that's not with the World Arena in action steadily as well. So we're making a lot of progress. What I'm hearing from the state level is that in December, they had about 45,000 doses to distribute. It's currently at 240,000. It's going to ramp up late March to 340,000. There are limited supplies of J&amp;J. I understand that it's going to be about 60,000. But towards the latter part of March and then into April, there will be more steady supplies. And it's going to ramp all the way up to a million statewide, and so late March and April. So you can see that as production increases, that will significantly ramp up El Paso County supplies. And we can do a lot with that. Overall, we've vaccinated, with our Vaccine Consortium, total doses administered, 220,000. We crossed the 200,000 mark last week of vaccines with the first dose. And again, just another stat, too. It took 60 days to reach the first 100,000 mark, and then it took only 30 days to reach the second 100,000 for the 200,000. So you can see, again, that's good news. I think that everyone is interested in how we're doing with the 70-plus-year-olds. And we are over that 70% mark when you pair state supplies with the federal supplies together. And I think that that's good news, too, because we know that the 70-plus-year-olds are the more severely affected. And we have been able to open up, per the governor's orders, to Phase 1b4 last Friday, which expands eligibility to Coloradans age 50 years and older, frontline essential workers in several fields, higher education, manufacturing, U.S. Postal Service, public transit, and specialized transportation, public health, human service workers, faith leaders, direct care providers for Coloradans experiencing homelessness, journalists, continuity of local government, continuity of operations for state government, and people ages 16 to 49 with one or more high-risk conditions, and adults who received a placebo during the COVID vaccine trial. To that point, when we talk about making vaccine equitable and trying to reduce barriers also, we have formed a partnership with the Downtown Partnership. And tomorrow, we'll be holding a clinic at the Antlers Hotel. So we're really looking at traditional and non-traditional partnerships throughout El Paso County to make easy access to the vaccine. And we've been working very closely with the Pike's Peak Chapter of the Restaurant Association. I do know that owners of restaurants, now that they're able to get vaccinated, we wanted it to have it walkable. We'll see how the weather cooperates. And many restaurant owners, I do understand that they are going to give their employees that paid time to encourage vaccinations as well. So there's a lot of great things that, as we get vaccine supplies that are happening. I also wanted to highlight this past weekend clinic. And I think, if I remember correctly, Councilwoman Yolanda Avila, you got your second dose.
I did.
At the Equity Clinic. And so we had simultaneous Equity Clinics at Peak Vista, UC Health at the South, YMC over there on Jet Wing. And then we also had a clinic at our new Public Health South building, where we vaccinated a little over 1,000 people. And I do want to tell a story about this, because the impacts that I'm seeing when I do work at these clinics, you can see the relief when people are there and they know that they're getting their vaccine. It's very visible. People are thankful. There were also some individuals that were cheering and saying, yay, I'm getting my second dose. And you can just see the thankfulness and how people are so grateful and so happy to be able to receive that second dose. And one thing that I experienced, it was on Saturday. We did a partnership with, as we always do, we have to work with trusted partners throughout our community. And we worked with Servicio de la Raza and with their promederos. And they helped us tremendously with public health at our South building. And there was a family that was so moved in what they had said. They were just incredibly grateful. And they observed how welcoming our clinic was. They gave a $5,000 donation to Servicio de la Raza. I mean, that's the kind of positivity that is going on. And I think that what I saw with that partnership with public health and with Servicio de la Raza, we were so integrated. And I worked at the front, just greeting people and checking people in. But many people didn't speak English. We had both English and Spanish forms, and we really had a good flow within there. But for someone to show up at a second-dose clinic and to be so moved and thankful in stating how welcoming that clinic was, it's really rewarding for the work that we're doing. And I think that everyone that has been involved in the response and the recovery, the words of encouragement, and those that roll up their sleeves and help out in the response and recovery and be part of the solution to help get our community through this to the next phase, it's been so wonderful. So I think that we're in a very different place than we were the last time that I had visited you with many different presentations and actually quite worried and concerned. It was a very different feeling last year. One other piece before I can open it up to questions. Maybe you have questions about the 3.0 dial change or some other aspects of the response and recovery. We are going to work to launch an interactive provider map. So we're working on an ArcGIS map. So we're always trying to streamline and increase visibility, because we know that the system, it is clunky. It's not. I mean, it's kind of an improvement as you go. But we will have an ArcGIS map. So when you look at El Paso County and Colorado Springs, you'll see where the vaccination clinics are. And that way, people can make a decision for themselves where to sign up and what is easy access for them. And so with that, I do have our medical director, Dr. Robin Johnson, here if there are any medical questions or technical questions. But I appreciate the opportunity to be here and would love any questions or comments.
Well, thank you so much, Susan and Dr. Johnson, and all of your hard work. Everybody, I can't thank you and your department and everybody who you depend on. We can't thank them enough. And so just what good news. So much, I feel like my shoulders are more relaxed than they've been for a year now. So thank you so much. We have councilmember Strand, Geisler, Murray, and Williams all want to ask questions. Go ahead, Tom.
Thank you, President Skorman. You took the words out of my mouth, but thank you very much for everything you've done for the last year. I have two questions. And Susan, they're maybe not easy ones. The first one is, we had a county commissioner that was concerned about El Paso County getting its fair share. And I asked these questions, and we asked you here today, not just for us, for the nine of us, but...
For the people who are watching, who may have questions, who watch or listen to this with other media. So how would you respond to the fact that maybe we didn't get as many vaccinations as the Denver area did? And whether our criticism of that process was valid?
Well, as Mayor Suthers had stated early on in February, the facts are is that we were not getting proportional supplies to El Paso County. And we learned about that early February. And so once the state became aware of that discrepancy, they have committed to us and are committed to us to get us to where we need to be. And I think that we'll be at proportional supplies within maybe two or three weeks. And so they have been steadily providing, have been providing increased supplies. And the week of February 8th is where we saw a big boost. But they have committed to us through General Scott Sherman, who Mayor Suthers and I keep in touch with, and also the leadership at CDPE, that they are sending increased vaccine supplies. And so I think that that's what I'm seeing. Context is so important here, and it's not a perfect system. I mean, with the entire pandemic, we've experienced so many different challenges along the way. And so it's going to be clunky at certain points. But I can tell you that I work very closely with the county commissioners. I keep them informed. And I think that, as elected officials, there's various different concerns, and they're welcome to speak up and demonstrate the leadership that they think is appropriate. But Commissioner Gonzalez and him pointing out that there were not proportional supplies, there aren't proportional supplies. However, I think really the focus is that we're working on that. And you also have to, context is important. There are state supplies, which we know about through CISS, the Colorado Immunization Information System, which that tracks information. But there's also federal supplies. And so that's coming in heavily. In our community, I think that we have the most bases, and we keep in touch with our garrison commanders, as well as the VA. So that paired with the state supplies, as you can see in the stats that I provided today, we're providing more vaccinations and we are getting increased supplies. Hopefully, that answered your question.
Yeah, it does. I guess maybe it was just an oversight, not anything intended to hurt El Paso County in particular by the decision-makers?
I believe that it was not intended to hurt El Paso County at all. And it was a discrepancy. And once we brought that to their attention, they responded quickly. However, with limited supplies, there's going to be limited increased supplies to El Paso County that is not a quick turnaround. And so it's definitely, it's been a process. But I'm seeing increased supplies, and our vaccine providers through the Vaccine Consortium, they stand ready to vaccinate as quickly as possible, as safely as possible. No doses are wasted or sitting on the shelves.
My last question, I talk to my 92-year-old mom every Sunday, and my siblings and I have finally tricked her into getting the vaccination. She just said she was at the end of the line and she didn't need it, but she's going in tomorrow. For those people who are reluctant to get this vaccination, what would you say to them about the importance?
Well, I think the importance is, first, I would say that people need to educate themselves and with credible sources of information. And we have those credible sources of information, which we are one of those at ElPasoCountyHealth.org. So I do think that people need to educate themselves and make informed decisions for themselves. I think that that's first and foremost. My job is to provide access to the vaccine in a system to get the vaccine out to individuals that want it. I think from a population-based standpoint and a community health standpoint, when people get the vaccine, get vaccinated, the more people that get vaccinated, the more blanket health protection we are able to provide in El Paso County. And it inches us closer to getting back to full capacity. And in a sense, I don't know if I want to say normal, because I think that we've all been changed through this pandemic. But it gets us to more normalcy of living our daily lives with that health protection. So I do think it is important. And I would say, the best vaccine is the vaccine that you're offered. And to get it when you can.
May I, Dr. Johnson, have a medical comment?
Sure, sure. And I will say, too, that my 80-plus-year-old parents recently got their second dose, and I can say just how relieved I am for their protection, because my mom is a social butterfly. And it's hard to keep her in the home. So I think that that just demonstrates, too. I mean, I believe in the vaccine, and it is safe and effective.
So, Dr. Robin Johnson, Medical Director of El Paso County Public Health. And the question is, what would I say to a patient who was hesitant about...
That's right.
So I'd say the most important thing about getting the vaccine, and we think about this, I think a lot of people will go, well, there might be somebody else who needs it more than I do, or whatever the other things that might sway us to wait. And I would say the most important thing you can do is actually to get your vaccine, because it's not one and done. You're protecting yourself. But because of the vaccine, even if you were to be exposed, the likelihood that you could then spread it on is significantly decreased. So it's the most loving thing you can do for the friends and family and coworkers that you can come in contact with. And eventually, we will reach that herd immunity, which Director Wieland spoke to, which is that blanket of immunity that keeps us from spreading the virus. So one of the things to really think about, too, is that in suppressing that spread of the virus, it keeps the pool from having places to kind of grow and change and turn into the next challenge for us. And so you are doing your work for tomorrow as well, when you get your vaccine today. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. That's a really good way to put it. All right. Any other questions, Tom?
No.
Okay. David?
Yeah, I'm actually writing down what you just said, Dr. Johnson, because that's a wonderful way to characterize that. And we'll get back to that, I think. Thank you again. I'm not sure the community appreciates just how involved this process has been, how incredible the response has been, not only on behalf of you, but on behalf of the hospital system, on the doctors, nurses, education system. This has been a monumental logistical response to a situation that, let's face it, we can prepare for it, but we're never prepared for it. So I commend you for leading the charge in this and bringing us to where we are now and bringing us to where we're going. I do have some logistical questions for you and some medical questions for Dr. Johnson. I've been talking to young people. Young people are concerned about financial barriers to getting, they don't have insurance, they're concerned about co-pays and things like that. Can you address that question, please?
There's no co-pays or cost to the vaccine. It's free. So any individual that is 16 years of age and older, because that's what the vaccine is approved for, and when they're in that priority group. And I do anticipate that mid-April, we will be able to vaccinate the general public, which I think will help reduce some of those logistical challenges and planning. But the vaccine is free. There is no cost.
And for individuals that do have a GP and do have health insurance and are concerned about potentially paying a co-pay, there shouldn't be a co-pay for them either?
There is no co-pay. And I appreciate you bringing that up, because if someone is saying that there is a fee, then it's a scam.
Okay. So there should be no financial obstacle whatsoever? This is the government saying, we want to get you immunized, and you do not have to pay anything to get this done?
No. I mean, as a clinical process, we do ask certain questions as it relates to safety standards. But there are no transactions of funds or money at these clinics. And if there are, out of pocket, then there's something wrong there.
Report that to somebody.
Yes. And we would like to know about that, and then we would work with our partners also to get information out. But it is free. We want to, anyone who wants a vaccine that is within the approved 16 years of age and older, we want to make it available to them.
Okay. And as we are ramping up the vaccinations and the number of people who are getting the immunizations, we've read about why it's still important to wear masks, to do social distancing, to limit the size of groups. Why is that necessary for people who have been vaccinated?
Well, I think I'll ask Dr. Johnson to come up here, but with that question, because I mean, there is some science and some medical aspects of that that I'd like her to address.
So the CDC has come out with some recommendations about that. And people, I can understand some of the confusion, because you think, well, I'm vaccinated. So isn't that good enough, right? And vaccine, though, isn't kind of this binary, now I can't pass it at all versus potentially the vector for everybody else getting sick. It is a little more nuanced than that, right? So while I am vaccinated, there still is a small chance that I could have or contract COVID. And it's much less likely that I would pass it on. But there's the pressure of exposure. So let's say we're vaccinated, and there's two of you who are not, and we all are not wearing our mask and in a community, sorry, I talk with my hands, I knock over things on the dais here, we're out in the community where there still is some pressure of incidents. So if every single one of us were to have some small inoculum for you, there's still a chance you can get sick. So that's the herd immunity that we want to get to. So when we're out in public, we wear our mask, not because myself is as infectious, but that pressure of multiple exposures is still present. And so we are caring for others, but also for ourselves, in the sense that that same pressure can apply backwards to us if we have multiple exposures with a vaccine. So that efficacy is where we really talk about, this 67% to 85%. And then when we start getting, though, the beautiful thing about the vaccine is that they all have 96% to 100% for the severe, or 85% to 100% for the severe and hospitalizations fatalities. And that is the pressure on our economy, that's the pressure on our hospitals. These are the things that will transform our ability to move forward into more normalcy.
And I told you I was going to get back to the most loving thing you can do. So part of the most loving thing you can do, then, is also to continue to wear masks, to continue to socially distance until we get to that point where we deal with this disease, much like we've dealt with the flu over the course of...
Yes. Yeah. And that will be the goal. We know that COVID is here, and there will probably always be a little bit of that background noise. There will, most likely, will discover some seasonality to it. It still is a novel disease. I mean, we really have only lived with it for a year. And as it has spread across the globe, there's been a lack of immunity in our population. So we'll follow over time, and I would anticipate that we'll begin to have more interaction around it, like we have with influenza in the past.
I don't want to put cold water on this really wonderful news, but is there, then, a risk of an additional spike or additional spikes that we're going to have to respond to as we have in the past?
So I think that those risks, every day we get more vaccines out, are less. And so that is the good news. Councilman Skorman, to your point of the weight on your shoulders, for me, it's an unwinding of the pressure in my chest as we get more vaccine, as we really are gaining solidarity as a community. Are we still at risk for a spike? Yes. And we are, because I think one of the things that happens is we have to get to that herd immunity. But we also have to stay the course. And I think it's really hard when we get to this point. Spring is coming, we've been doing this for a year, we finally have really good news. And I think that the temptation is to just throw all caution to the wind and say, we're done. But we're not quite done yet. The light is there at the end of the tunnel. We have one of the strongest tools in our toolbox that we've had with this vaccine. We have one of the strongest tools in our toolbox that we've had with this vaccine, but we still have these other tools that we need to layer until we get to that place where we have the herd immunity to truly protect our community, our economy, and our ability to socialize and, you know, begin to interact normally.
Quality of life that we're used to.
Yes.
And so just to, again, Warren, talk about the people that are listening, one of the tools that we may have to go back to is responding to spikes if and when they occur.
Yes. And so that's part of what we do with our data office, is we continue to follow that data and be very clear and transparent, you know, following those trends. Right now, we have really plateaued, you know, and we're still on the present dial. We are still in that yellow. It's low, but we haven't been able to dip down into blue with our incidents. And so we know that there's still, you know, there's virus circulating. So we need to stay the course, and we'll continue to monitor that and communicate with you as we have the data.
Thank you. Final question is, since I do work at the hospital, my second dose was January 7th. My arm hurt. It just, it happens, and it hurt for a couple of days, but I've had no other side effects. Can you talk briefly about people who are concerned about side effects, what the incidence of them are, what, you know, things like that, just to address the people who may be concerned about participating in this, in the immunizations because of stories they've heard?
Yeah, and I think it's really important for us to, you know, distinguish, there are very, you know, few true reactions to it, and they typically are early on with an allergic reaction, and that can be dealt with, and has been very effectively. So as far as the side effects go, though, one of the things that you have to remember is that you're presenting your immune system with a photocopy of the enemy. And so they have to begin, I always think of our immune system as our generals in the Army, and they're coming together, they're going to share that information, again, I'm knocking things off the dais, I'm so sorry. They're going to share that information throughout the other cell lines in the immunologic response with the other reactions that need to be made, and they have to get a little fired up, because they have to share that information. And so they actually meet in your lymph nodes to, you know, begin to interact and talk. That's the war room. So you might get a little bit of, you know, swollen glands, you might get a little bit of a low-grade fever, you might feel kind of achy, you're going to need to drink some fluid, maybe take some Tylenol to, like, tell them to chill just a little bit, and you might feel like sleeping. So particularly with the second dose, we say, you know, plan on maybe having a lower key day, and use some Tylenol, lots of fluids and rest. But that is actually, can be a really good response. I mean, not everybody's immune system is quite so verbose in the way they let you know that they're mounting the response they're supposed to, but that's natural, and we would expect to see some of that. And some people get a little bit more achy than others, but there are those who don't really have a response either.
So it's a sacrifice to do the most loving thing you can do?
Yeah, actually, it is a sacrifice doing the most loving thing you can do, but it's just part of the process. This is part of how your body is going to respond and be ready to fight the infection. And if you don't give them the photocopy, and they're not prepared to stand in that gap and say, you shall not pass, when they see the virus, then you will definitely know that you got the virus. And I think if you speak to anyone who's, you know, had a more severe response to the virus, the vaccine and giving your immune system a heads-up is definitely worth it.
Not only for you, but for the family and people?
Absolutely, for our whole community.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Okay, I have Bill, Wayne, and then Don.
Ma'am, stay at the podium if you don't mind. Real fast, first of all, be careful of your, talking about general officers communicating, you have a bunch of old colonels here, we won't get into that one. All right, but what I'm interested in is several things. One, the status of our testing, contact tracing, and your review of the variants you're seeing in our area. Very briefly, okay, are we doing enough testing? Are we doing enough contact tracing? Do you have enough resources, okay, to handle it? And how many variants have you seen in El Paso County?
So we still have a robust Epi team who can do the contact tracing, and they have been involved in that, and following, you know, when there are outbreaks, to help people understand when they need to isolate and/or quarantine. I'm trying to remember the series of questions. Testing, we are doing adequate--
Ma'am, you have adequate resources?
Yeah, we have adequate resources, in that we still have the testing that is available at those sites at the Citadel, and Director Whelan can speak to that, but I'll let you speak to it, and then I'll come back.
Mr. Murray, when you're talking about resources, I want to refresh where we are with resources. So when the, we started the response to the pandemic, we had to shut, limit, and close many of local public health programs in order to reassign resources, mainly human, to ramp up our community disease and our epidemiology investigations for, you know, a steady state for public health is 3.5 FTEs in our community disease program. So we significantly ramped up our contact tracers, our epidemiologists, through CARES funds that we have available. So we are, we've ramped up from 158 FTE all the way to 200, and some of those are contractors as well, but we still, you know, are at the state where we do need those resources. So an answer to your question, yes, we have enough resources. We are also expanding those resources. When there is an increase, more increases in vaccine, we want to be poised and ready throughout Colorado Springs as well as El Paso County to look at other options for mass vaccinations at the Colorado Springs Event Center, over there on Palmer Lake, Palmer Park, and Maislin, as well as potentially up north. We have had the business community respond to us and offer up their sites for consideration. For example, DOT is the one that reached out for the World Arena, and we've made that happen with the state resource support, as well as we're looking up at, we've looked at New Life Church, we've looked at North to Pike's Peak Community College, and we're also looking at Chapel Hills Mall and the parking lot. I do want to say that the State Health Department, in their partnership with us, has also resulted in providing human resources for our clinics and whatever resources we need when we make requests. So they will send vaccinators, and we are also, again, we're, we want to ramp up and expand access points and human resources, not only for the hospitals, but for public health. I mean, that's, that's really, you know, an area that is a challenge, because you can't, you know, work people seven days a week. So, so, yes, but we're steadily increasing those resources.
Ma'am, I'm a real, you know, specific guy, okay? As I have said for a year now, if you need anything, you need to ask for it, we need to make sure it's immediately given to you to help resolve this issue very specifically. You seem to be doing a good job. I trust you, and I'll trust our resources in support of your endeavors. And as part of the issues that I bring forward, as a public display of faith, I know this entire council, to the best of my knowledge, has all agreed to get the vaccines. I've gotten mine, I've just got my second one, I'll be coming back in April, as far as an active, engaged member. But for those who have already had COVID once, okay, what is your recommendation? Should they just go out and get the vaccine as well?
That's a great question. I'll let Dr. Johnson answer that, but to be specific, yes. But there's some--
That's it? I'll get to believe.
Okay.
And I'm sure everyone in the council, I can't speak for anybody myself, but to the best of my knowledge, there's no member of this council who is not going to get the vaccine. But thank you.
Okay. Mr. Murray, I did want to take the opportunity, when you talk about asking for resources and being specific, I do want to commend members of your team that I am in daily communication with, and one outstanding member of your team is Brett Waters. And when I ask for resources, for example, whether it's communication, leadership, Jamie Fabos, she has been incredible, Kim Melkor, also Christina, Brett's executive assistant, I don't know what her last name is. I have never met her in person, or don't even know what she looks like, but I hold weekly policy meetings with the Vaccine Consortium. She helps us generate, helps me generate the agendas, she takes minutes, and I do want to assure you, any request that I have of Brett Waters, he responds very quickly, and we have a great working relationship with the City of Colorado Springs and staff. You've got a phenomenal team.
I wish you'd mentioned some elected officials.
Oh, I could do that, I could, I could do that as well. And I think across the board, I mean, I keep in communication with you all and, you know, Yolanda Avila, because she's a Board of Health member, but I think that you all have my cellphone number, and you guys call me or text me often when you have any questions or even ideas. Richard Skorman had the idea of, you know, interfacing with the Fire Department, and from that, we've resulted in some, some good partnerships as well, along with Ted Colas, who's been involved in all of our policy groups, too. But I appreciate every single elected official on this board and the work that we've been doing together as a team, because there's been many shifts, twists, and pivots along the way, and without your leadership, we would not be successful.
Thank you. That's really nice of you to say. Really appreciate it. Well, good, I have Don and then Yolanda.
Did I get skipped?
Oh, I'm sorry, Wayne, you're first, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Wayne.
Okay, thanks.
I just thought, you're with the beard, it's just so hard to recognize.
Happy sesquicentennial. We had a great kickoff. Several of us were there with the mayor, and we're excited for it. But let me, let me talk about, because part of it is, we're hoping that by the time the sesquicentennial takes place this July, that we actually are able to enjoy more of a public process. So I want to, I'll come back to a couple of the issues that were raised earlier, but I want to focus a little bit on the future here. So the governor's latest press release, as he talks about Dial 3.0, contemplates some changes. For those businesses that achieve the five-star certification, will they still have that ability to be open on a greater basis than Dial 3.0 permits?
I do know that there is discussion about maintaining, incentivizing the five-star businesses as the dial changes. Do I know what that's going to look like? I do not. Unfortunately, a little bit of information related to our incidents in El Paso County is that we have not been able to dip below 100. So our seven, eight incidents has been higher than 100 for our metrics. And so the last time that we dipped below seven, eight incidents of 100 was October 14th of 2020. And I say that because many of the dial changes are focused on the blue level and the green level, and in order to be more expanded with opening, if you're not a five-star, you have to, you have to have a seven, eight incidents below 100. And unfortunately, we have not been able to achieve that since October.
Okay. And I guess the input, and I imagine that you guys provide input to the process, certainly for our businesses that have gone through, in some cases, the fairly costly process of obtaining that certification, that should not be tossed out the window with a new dial, because we'd still want them to have, because we do have some businesses that are, have been more aggressive in trying to protect their customers, and we want to make sure that they are, continue to be rewarded for that.
I completely agree, and know that we provide that feedback, and not only in El Paso County, but that's a concern statewide, that the businesses have went above and beyond, and also, you know, increased their costs to provide additional safety and prevention measures for COVID. There needs to be some type of incentive for that status and that effort.
Okay. As vaccines continue to be distributed, the governor's current plan, at least as I can tell from his website, is that by mid-April, we'll be moving to a local model where the restrictions finally are going to be decided again at the local level. So what process is the Department of Health and our board going to use with respect to seeking public input, with respect to, how do you plan to proceed?
That is an excellent question. I have to first understand what that local control means. And what I gather from the information that I've been privy to is that the local control means that you have the ability to expand much more in the green, I'm sorry, the blue and the green, but I'm not quite sure what that means for counties that are in the yellow, such as ours. So I'm not sure what that local control means. However, all along, you know, with our process, I keep in touch with you all through Brett Waters or Jeff Green, and the mayor through our, and Yolanda Avila's on the policy and the Vaccine Consortium. So that is an area where we have discussion, and then also, there are a couple of county commissioners on there, but I think that we would use the Regional Recovery Council, which we had spearheaded with the Colorado Springs Chamber and the EDC. So there's multiple different partnerships where we would gain feedback, and I would not, as a public health director, make any quick decisions as it relates to, you know, the enormity of what those impacts, you know, may or may not be. But I first need to understand, what does local control mean, from the governor?
And we'd all like to understand that. So I think that's a very logical response. I would say that when you know, that would be an excellent time for you to come back and visit with city council, because I think when we shift from a model of thou shalt from Denver and are able to make some decisions once again at the local level, I think that's an important time to have the process of involving the elected leaders, as well as obviously the Board of Health. But that is, you know, when we actually have the chance to make decisions at the local level, I think that's an important time to visit with us again. So I'd ask that you do that. And I appreciate the fact that you guys have always kept all of us involved and aware to the extent that we need information. Let me go back now, because I'm a little confused. So with respect to vaccine distribution, I think you guys have been doing a very good job, and I appreciate the work that you all are doing. Could we handle more vaccines if we got them?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'll say, so we use planning assumptions. So with our existing infrastructure, we're able to handle upwards of 40,000 doses per week, and then we are able to handle all the way up to 121,000 doses per week, as I talked about, expanding resources, human resources, as well as different sites, Colorado Springs Convention Center and somewhere up north. And, you know, we've, we've done RFQs, requests for quotes, and, you know, to increase staffing. And so this is, this is an ongoing effort to be prepared, to see what's on the horizon and what's coming, and then to be ready to, you know, flip the switch. So we are prepared, and we are also preparing to scale up.
Okay. So I appreciate your work on that. I am a little concerned that it's taken the state, if it's going to be two to three more weeks, two months to correct the discrepancy. I think that's absurd, and that is no, in no way reflects on our local Department of Health. But if you see a problem, you should fix it quickly, not take months during which individuals may have died as a result of the state's dragging their feet. Who, have we figured out who was asleep at the switch yet at the state level who wasn't aware of this discrepancy until we pointed it out? of this discrepancy until we pointed it out?
Well, I will say that, you know, I've worked very closely with the State Health Department leadership, as well as the governor's office, and General Scott Sherman has gotten involved in early April, when the mayor and I had a call with him. And so I can just tell you that there is a, they tell me that they are committed to increasing our vaccine supplies. And, you know, I trust in that. I mean, I don't, I don't know, you know, exactly what occurred, but I think that along the way, when vaccine supplies were available, the priority groups were various different occupations. So it was healthcare and first responders. And I know that what has been said at the state level, that there are more healthcare workers and first responders, I guess, in the Denver, or the Denver County. But I, and I also know that the director of the State Health Department had written an editorial, kind of, you know, providing a framework around how decisions were made. But I don't, you know, I am focused on the response and the recovery and putting my energy into when we do get vaccine and they increase supplies, of responding very quickly and making vaccinations available. So that's where my focus is. And I want to assure you that all throughout the processes, that I have to stay focused. And, you know, there's only so much energy that I can dispense related to the enormity of every aspect of this, but that's where I'm staying focused.
So I appreciate that. That is where the focus should be. I'm not criticizing your focus at all of this. I'm just saying that at some point, you know, part of the responsibility of leading an organization is, when it screws up, figuring out what happened, why, and what you're going to do to ensure it doesn't happen in the future. And I'm certainly aware that folks in Denver, more aware of things in Denver than they are the rest of the state. But that is something that is important for the state leadership. It's one of the reasons, when I was secretary, it was in every county clerk's office, because you have to be aware of what else is going on. And I'm very concerned that they, they wouldn't have noticed this discrepancy until we pointed it out from down here, because if you were in charge of something that is involved with saving lives, you ought to at least have the awareness to make sure it is distributed equitably and fairly across the state. So I appreciate the work. You guys have been phenomenal. You've provided, frankly, your briefings have been way better than most of the others I have seen from the professionals on network TV. And so I very appreciate the work. And I echo my colleagues' comments. If there's anything that you do need that you're not getting, please let us know. We are happy and eager to assist. We want to make sure that you've got every resource you need to protect the people of our communities. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Okay. I have Don and then Yolanda.
First, let me echo what all my fellow colleagues have said, our appreciation for all you've done in handling this and keeping our citizens as safe as possible. Just hopefully, a real easy, simple question for you. Your colleague mentioned, you know, go home and take some Tylenol on the second shot. But when I was getting my shots, they said, don't take Tylenol beforehand, don't take Ibuprofen. And there were either some stuff about, you know, don't take it afterwards. So for, you know, in my case, after my second shot, even though, you know, I was a little lethargic, I stayed away from the Tylenol. So what is that for, hopefully, the thousands of people that are watching here?
Tens of thousands.
Tens of thousands that are watching.
Tens of thousands. Now I'm intimidated.
You know, what are you supposed to do for not taking Tylenol, Ibuprofen? How long ahead of time do you need to wean yourself off? And then when can you go back to it?
So we don't typically need it, you know, beforehand. And usually, it's just a couple hours after that you might need some Tylenol. And that would be, you know, my preference. I think that there is some theoretical, because of the prostaglandin interference of your Ibuprofen, it actually decreases a little of the inflammation. There are some people who are concerned that that might interfere a little bit with the immune response. There's no evidence that would support that. And so to take a little to, and the Tylenol is really around more of that aches, and it's more of an antipyretic, meaning it lowers the temperature, or if you have a little bit of a temperature. And we know that it helps decrease some of those body aches as well. But the only concern with utilizing those really would be if it were to blunt your immune response. But I am not aware of evidence and certainly can, if there is someone who, maybe we could talk offline, you could tell me who was discussing that, and I can ask them if they had data that supported that, because I have not seen it.
There was a national news article. And then I got mine through UC Health. So this is, I'm one week from, so four weeks ago today, on the instructions they sent me, said, don't take Tylenol or Ibuprofen ahead of time.
Let me reach out to Dr. Steinbrenner, their CMO, and just follow up on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, good. Yolanda, I think is the last one who's on the list.
Thank you, President Skorman. And wow, Richard, I didn't know that you had suggested about the fire department. That was such an excellent suggestion for our homebound seniors. So thank you for that. And I'm gonna, before I talk about how great you guys are, I just have a couple of questions. I know that in, that I heard 70% of our seniors from 70-plus have been vaccinated. Is that here in El Paso County?
Yes.
So we reached that threshold?
Yes. And Councilmember Avila also wanted to just know that that's with state supplies and federal. So what you'll notice on our data dashboard, our vaccine dashboard, is that we have federal supplies. Another feature that we added, I think it was last week, that you'll see that the doses administered goes up. So yes, we're confident saying that we've reached that milestone with our federal partners here in El Paso County.
That's great. And so I think I have a, I may have stepped out during that time, but a question for Dr. Johnson, in that, let's say you had COVID. When are you encouraged to get the vaccine? And how long after you have COVID do you get the vaccine?
So the recommendation, if you've had COVID, is to still get the vaccine. The most important thing is to not get it while you're still symptomatic. So there's not a time limit after that, meaning like you have to wait 30 or 90 days. It's that you are asymptomatic, meaning so you've gotten through the 10 days from first symptoms. You have no fever, no body aches. And so it would be similar to isolation, but it may be extended, because you just want to assure that you're really feeling normal. And we would do that with any vaccine. Just want you to not have other symptoms.
To follow up with that, is, once you do get COVID and you went, you know, you had the symptoms and everything, isn't it as effective that your body recognizes it, has taken a picture? And is it still important to get the vaccine? Or will your body hold that immunity?
So that's a really good question, and that is something that has been being followed so that we really can understand this particular virus and our immune response to it. We do know that there has not been significant reinfection within that 90-day window. So after the initial infection, but then as we follow out, we still are really learning about reinfection. And there is more stability in the immune response from the vaccine than what we might see across the board from a natural immunity, just because of the, like even the severity of your symptomology, there may be some variability in immune response. So because of the vaccine, we actually can quantify that more consistently.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. And I just, I think about the science and what went into this to create these vaccines. Incredible, and incredible how our bodies function and are made. So I did have my second dose, and I'll say I went through the aches and the fatigue for 36 hours. And when I heard you talk about that's, you know, our response to get ready to fight the vaccine, if we do come into contact, I mean, the virus, if we come into contact, it's incredible and it's amazing. And I was like, thank you, body, you're doing your work. And so it was worth going through that to feel that maybe, you know, getting COVID would be intense and, you know, possibly going to the hospital and dying. So I even, so if a person could look at it, the way you described it and how your body's just getting ready, the generals getting the troops in order, I think that's incredible. So that's great. So what I wanted to say to the public health, El Paso County Board of Health, your work is tremendous. I mean, we talk about it, but I've seen you, Susan, in action from a year ago, when this first hit us. And I worry about you, because you are nonstop, seven days a week. And I want to make sure that we take care of you. You have been blasted at times, because you've been the messenger. And people just go at you. We know what it's like, the gotcha things that people do as elected officials here. And I think you've gone through a lot of that. And I just want you to know that we, I am, I think, so incredibly grateful for your diligence, your leadership, and your collaboration and cooperation with all the entities involved, not looking to assign blame, you know, at the state and local levels. This is where we are, this is what we got, and this is what we need, and going, being solution oriented. It's been incredible, your team with Fadi and Maggie, and to listen to them and Stephen, you know, give out the data, and they're just incredible. And I hear you say the Prometoras, the collaboration with Servicios de la Raza. Prometoras are women that are from the community, and they go out, they're all Spanish-speaking, and they go out to the community and reassure them about the vaccine being safe, how to get there. They provide transportation. It's been an incredible effort. And so with you doing that and working with the mayor, working with Brett, the Office of Emergency Management, I don't know if people can grasp the intensity, because this virus, you can't put in a checkbox and say, oh, that check, check, check. It is fluid. It is virulent. It is a formidable enemy. And it's not going away and just, you know, it's not like a fire that you're dealing with it. It's just nonstop. So I just want to make sure that you all know, and Dr. Johnson, you are ready with every question. And your responses are so necessary. So I just want you all to know that you are thoroughly appreciated and that we want you to care for yourselves, because I can call you at midnight on a Sunday and you will answer, Susan. So I, and I want people out there watching and listening, all 10 of you, know, that we really need to appreciate our Department of Public Health, because it has done a stellar, stellar job in this fight against the virus. That's it.
Really well said, Yolanda. Thank you. Jeff, you have your hand up, and we should probably let them get their important work done.
Thank you, Mr. President. And also on behalf of the city council and our mayor, Susan, thanks to you and Dr. Johnson for being here today. We're very, very appreciative of all the good work. Also, I want to give a special shout out to our hospital systems, both Centura and UC Health, and Peak Vista, working very closely with public health in the distribution of our vaccines, coordinating very closely. And also, I know the mayor takes this very seriously. I take it very seriously. Mr. Waters takes it very seriously. On a weekly basis, the mayor has a conversation with the governor. I work very closely with the governor's chief of staff. When we need resources, we need to do allocation to benefit this community, public health works very closely with us. So thanks for being here today. We discussed a lot of information and we're just very appreciative.
Yeah. And I just wanted to say one more thing and just to, I'm filled with gratitude, not only for the Colorado Springs City Council and the mayor, but also for our El Paso County Board of Commissioners. You know, we all are strong leaders, and you guys have been tremendous, as well as the commissioners and the mayor, with his support of local public health. He has been outstanding. And, you know, there's multiple conversations, you know, seven days a week, as we've gone throughout this pandemic, and there will continue to be, to get us through it. And we just greatly appreciate the support. And support means also, you know, asking some tough questions. It means, you know, sharing, you know, what we're doing well. But all along this process, we know that there's going to be lessons learned. That's part of emergency response. And then we do after-action reports, and this has been a really long crisis, and, you know, and, you know, we're getting into the recovery. But we have to, you know, be thoughtful along the way, and where can we improve with the resources that we have? But there hasn't been perfect resources, you know, around the world, or the nation, or the state, or locally. And we continue to be solution oriented and drive forward. But I want to make sure that you all know that I appreciate you. I might not, you know, speak with you, you know, as much as I do with other members of your team, but you guys are, you guys are our leaders. And I think that, you know, what you do and say, and how you say that too, sets the tone for El Paso County and Colorado Springs. And I want to say that I felt that, you know, we've been together, maneuvering our way through, and will continue to do that. And I appreciate the support that you all have given. We will do a proclamation tomorrow celebrating National Public Health Week. I'm not sure if I'm going to be here. We're going to be limited to two people. I want to highlight members of my team that maybe don't, that you don't see all the time to show up. But we've got a ways to go. But I just want you to know that how much I appreciate you. And your team is phenomenal. I can't say enough about, you know, I've met Brett back in the early 2000s, Brett Waters, and he is an outstanding representative of Colorado Springs. And he's been wonderful. And I also, you know, want to thank you, Councilwoman Avila, also, not for serving on our, in addition to serving on our board, but also being part of the equity conversation in our vaccine policy and our Vaccine Consortium. We need feedback, and many minds are better than, you know, one organization or one leader. So thank you so much. Take care, stay well, and I'll be sure to come back once we have a little bit more information around kind of what the future looks like in the 3.0 dial and how that's going to affect businesses and involving local control. So thank you.
Thank you, Susan and Dr. Johnson. And I'm not going to say anything else, because everybody else has said it, but let's give them a standing ovation, and we will do the same tomorrow. Thank you.